Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for January 4th, 2022. My name is Carrie Marneck. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I need to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of June 16th, 2021, an act relevant to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northboard Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. Member, I'd like to confirm now that members and persons participating in the agenda are remotely present can be heard by saying the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Millie Milton?
Here.
Amy Prodsky?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie?
Yeah.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brad Litchfield?
Here.
Great. So covering ground rules for the meeting. I will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to that. Participation will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to meet their phone or computer. We're not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by roll call rule. For members, for, excuse me, for items of public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford the public comment as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please know party or phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click raise hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And that covers all of the notes to be read. So why don't we get started with the agenda? The first item on the agenda this evening is the discussion, the continued bylaw discussion. So we have our continued discussion on the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for 2022. The first one we had here is actually the revised bylaw proposal for 75 Ridge Road has been withdrawn. Next, we have 37 South Street. So I want to make sure, did everybody in the Planning Board receive, we received some letters of support for 37 South Street? Did anybody receive those letters? Let me check. One second here. Just want to see if George is in the audience. No, I don't see George. Okay, so it looks like the letters we received, let me pull them up. One was from the Director Butter. I think was that from the Hunt, was that the Hunt family? Who sent the letters?
Yep.
Okay, and the other was from the Lelands, other across the street?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, did anyone have any comments or questions about the letters?
I did mention to George to ask the commercial building next door. I don't know if he had time or just didn't. I don't know if it matters to anybody. Because he had a Butters on three sides, across the street, the left end to the right.
I don't, I don't remember any notes in there about that. I think it was, was it just the two letters attached to the email?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hope and George would be here. But the one that you're asking about, they're already zoned downtown business, right?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to get a letter, you know, from all sides, just to make sure. You hate to have someone come back.
I don't, I can't imagine someone who's already business on one side is going to care whether business on the other side. You already have two of the other Butters agreeing to it, so I think that's, I think he's done his due diligence.
Don't really agree, but I just, I've been, you know, we've been burnt before, so I just wanted to touch all bases.
Okay, so in terms of this bylaw in general, this is a proposal to switch the zoning specific to 37 South Street. Were there other outstanding questions for this?
No, maybe just to Fred or Bob, if you read the bylaw, when, if even when it goes to town meeting, do they have to put a copy of the new map with it? Because the map will have to change. I see the bylaw says it's changing the map, but does an updated map actually go to town meeting too?
Yes.
I don't believe the map goes to the town meeting. They might show a diagram of how the line might move, but the actual map gets amended by the GIS department after town meeting if the application is approved. That's my understanding unless Bob has some different background. It's been a while since we've done a zone map amendment, but my recollection of the past is that it's a verbal description. There's usually explanation about what's the uses that's changing, all the stuff that you've already talked about. And then the map gets amended because it's, it's done outside the parameters of town meeting.
Bob, do you have insight into that?
Yeah, Fred's right. I don't ever remember seeing anything other than a diagram showing the specific area that you're talking about presented in any town meeting. It's usually, you know, the map gets caught up as part of the GIS updates over the, over the next year. That is, of course, like Fred said, providing a passes town meeting and Attorney General approves it.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Is it something that we want to move forward? Or what is the general board sentiment on this one?
I'm okay with it. I might end up abstaining just because I did ask for the left side, the commercial side too, just for a letter and since we don't have it, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
And it's easy to say that they won't mind, but I figured didn't hurt to ask.
Okay, well, how about, so Anthony's not here either, so why don't we at least keep it for now? And progress it forward to, I think we still have another meeting before the end of the month and then just I can send a quick note to George to see if there is a letter. Maybe Kathy just wasn't able to send it before she left or maybe there's not, and then we'll at least know if there's a letter coming or not, and if not, then maybe that solidifies. If you're, if you're not for it, that's okay. But we'll at least know if we're getting a letter or not. Sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's see, then we have our, right, getting back to our other list. So Fred, you mentioned that you have one coming, but it's not available this evening. The floodplain, the floodplain bylaw?
Yes, I thought it was going to be a little bit simpler than it's turning out to be. I'm still working on it. I've got to talk to Bob. The folks at the DCR would like to see a draft before we go to a town meeting. It's all being implemented at their request. They're trying to get all the municipalities in the state to have the same language, the same purpose and goals and objectives, all to do with the same bylaw. So we want to make sure it's uniform with what everybody else is doing and it's just going to take a little more work. On a separate note, going back to the 37 South Street, I just saw an email from Michelle in my office that George was looking for the agenda and the link to sign in, so he may be coming shortly to add something to the last discussion.
Oh, actually, I think he is here. It looks like he is. Does that look like to you as well, Jim?
I, yes, yeah, I believe he just, just came in, but again, I'm just seeing George as well.
Okay, I'm just gonna pop George in for a second to see if he wants to. George, you there?
Yes, I am, Carrie.
Hello, thanks for joining us. We were just talking about 37 South Street and thank you. You sent over a couple of letters that Kathy sent to us. Amy was just wondering if you heard anything from, what was it, Amy, the other side, the commercial?
The commercial person on the left side.
Yeah, I spoke to him in person and I got kind of an interesting response. He said, oh, it must be a dispute between the two people on the other side. I said, no, no, it's just the guy on the other side is already, this is Kenny Hunt now, as I said, he's already agreed to this. And the guy across the street has agreed to it, so we're just, you know, the Planning Board wanted to hear from you as well. So he said, well, send me an email. I'll see what I can do. Well, he never responded to my email, so I don't have any report from him. He wasn't particularly worried about it, I don't think. After all, he's, he's got the same setup as, as our property does. He's got businesses in there, so.
Okay, Amy, do you have any other questions regarding that?
Do you think George, there'd be a way to get the letter before our next meeting? We don't need the bylaws in until the first week of February.
I, what I can tell you is that the guy told me he was going to Florida. So, I mean, I could email him again, but I can't guarantee that he'll respond to my email, which kind of tells me he doesn't care.
Right, but the same thing happened to your client. They got letters that their property was moving, going to be residential and not business, and they didn't reply. So you could say the same thing. I guess they didn't care, but now they do.
I think you're stretching it when you say that.
Well, no.
Yeah, I think so. I, I really think if the guy was worried about it, he would have said something, or he would have contacted someone in the town and said, hey, what's going on? He didn't, he doesn't, he doesn't care.
Right, but the other guys, your guys didn't either.
He and Gabriel get along well with each other. Yeah, but my guys didn't, and maybe they got a letter, who knows how they got notified the last time, but I personally talked to the guy. So it wasn't like, oh, this is another piece of junk mail he ignored. This wasn't junk mail, it was a personal conversation I had with the guy.
Okay, all right, well, we, before, I don't know if you were on before, but we just discussed progressing it to the next meeting, any regardless. So if you hear anything, let us know, and then otherwise your feedback's been really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to switch you back over. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so we'll, we'll have the same plan if we hear back. Great, the next month we'll also have Anthony and we'll just be able to finalize all our bylaws at the next meeting anyway. And then we'll have to figure out also scheduling our public hearing. Fred, do we know for doing the public hearing, in the past, we've certainly done it much later than after the articles have been passed in. Did Kathy mention timeline for a public hearing?
We didn't talk about the timeline, but I believe it has to be held. I suppose it has to be held before the warrant closes, just so that you could make amendments at the last minute before it went to press.
That's a good point.
I, I think it can, usually they happen in March.
Okay.
I, I know the, I know that the Board of Selectmen hold their public hearings when we're doing a straight for a subdivision, they hold a public hearing, and those are done in March. So I would assume that if you hold it at your first meeting in March, you'd probably be well within the timeframe. But I can confirm the deadline for holding that public hearing for you and shoot you a quick email tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, I didn't know if Kathy left you a cheat sheet.
Yeah, and to the Chair, he's correct. It's usually the first meeting in March, so.
All right, so we'll aim for that. Okay, getting to our other bylaws, I'm just going to start with what I have here, just on my ongoing list. And that starts with breweries. So Amy, I know you submitted, do you want to share anything that you, the file that you had sent over, that you had shared?
Sure, yep. Let me see. Have to find the right one. Still looking for it.
Do you want to pull it up?
Um, yeah, just weird. Let me, I have all, I can see all my windows and that one's not showing. Let me just open it. I can do it. Must have shot it before the meeting. Sorry. I thought I was had them all open. Here it comes. Sorry. Here we go. Did that come up?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to make sure I had the last one. So Kathy didn't have time to do it before she left, so I pulled up the information I had in September and then made some changes to it today, just to update it with all the research I did. So for breweries. The town I researched, they defined them and then added them to the use table. So when I went through, I found definitions. I, Shrewsbury updated theirs last year, and I looked at Shrewsbury, Grafton, and use their bylaws. So for the smaller ends that we had talked about, which would probably be downtown, business east, business west, if people wanted to do brewery, would be the smaller ones, which is the Nano Brewery and the Brew Pub. The Brew Pub seemed more like a restaurant that also brews beers and accessory use. Where the Nano Brewery was more of the brewery and then had food as an accessory use. So I don't know if we need both of them, or just pick one of them, because they both have food and they both allow malt, wine, and hard cider. The only difference between the Nano Brewery between Shrewsbury and this one must have been Grafton was some people add the sale and distribution of the, whatever they brew, whether it's malt wine or hard cider. The sale and distribution part cannot exceed 25% of the production capacity, which means 75% of what they make would have to be served on site. I don't know if that matters to board members. The other definition didn't have a percentage. They both include, may include other uses such as restaurant, including outdoor dining. I think we asked, I asked Kathy about that, and she mentioned we might not have to use the including outdoor dining because we do allow outdoor dining. I'm not sure, Bob, what your take is on that. Do we just allow outdoor dining everywhere here, or do we need to mention it in a restaurant or brewery definition?
We already have outdoor dining up on Solomon Pond Road. I'm trying to think of any other places that actually have outdoor dining that is outside of the COVID relaxation of the zoning bylaws. So, you know, one of the questions I do have is you're talking about a percentage of production capacity. Who sets that capacity number and at what point? Is it in the planning process? Or is it after the production facility is built and they decided to add another, another tank? Or another set of brew operations within the same building? That's a very gray area that I think probably needs to have some more clarification.
Okay, I mean, I can call Grafton and Shrewsbury. Those were things that Kathy mentioned she was going to do. I could try to call them. Some towns don't even have capacity. So I didn't know if that was better to have it or not have it. But at least there's a max capacity in case it starts growing too large. I don't know the answers to your question, but I just use, the towns either use a nano brewery at 6,000 barrels or a microbrewery at 15,000 barrels, and Carrie's, I mean Kathy said it must be a standard number because that's what she sees too.
Yeah, I mean, but the thing is, if you have, you know, say, a a nano brewery come in and, you know, they have, say, two tanks, and then all of a sudden they discover they want to add three more. Okay, their production capacity just doubled. So the amount, you know, 25% of double the original amount is a, is a big number. My question is, who monitors that? And isn't that a probably a a total production capacity that should be agreed to at the planning stages as opposed to after the facility is built?
I would think so as part of the special permit. It'd be a condition, because it would all depend on the area, like, I would say, like a warehouse or a building that might be bigger, a big business west may not be as big in downtown business. So I would think the size. So are you guys asking about how much can be sold to other establishments, like other businesses and restaurants and distributors? Because that's the way I read it. Not to the general public. Right, that's in this one down here. But I thought Bob was asking how many? Like.
I was, I was inquiring about total production capacity, okay? Millie's talking about, you know, distribution, and is that distribution directly to other bars? Or is it to a distribution facility, or is it available for retail sale?
Right, right. We can add that in. The Brew Pub talks about sold to other establishments. And, and the Nano Brewery just says establishments capacity, which I took going out to either other establishments or being sold to the public. They seem like pretty standard definitions that all the towns use, so I guess, yeah, I could call some towns and get their input.
Amy, if you're asking for input from the towns, maybe you could ask them why they felt that was necessary, because it, it seems like if 75% of their production has to be consumed on site, then it's really more of a restaurant and a bar than it is a brewery to just to make the beer. And they're different, they're a different. I guess I would want to know why. I mean, usually the restaurant or the bar is limited by their seating and their parking more so than their production. I'm just curious as to what difference does it make?
Right. Right.
Shrewsbury just.
Yeah. I think that's exactly what they're trying to delineate, is whether this is a restaurant that sells beer and brews it, but doesn't sell it to distribute, distribute to other organizations or vendors. So that's, I think that's why they have that capacity limitation. If you're greater than that, then you're something else. But.
It's a good question.
Like Cold Harbor is pretty small, but they do sell some of their beer to other restaurants and Julio's Liquors, so I don't know. I don't know how they're set up. I just tried to pick
Yep.
definitions that I saw in majority of the towns. Hudson actually didn't even have a definition for brewery or nano brewery that I could find, so I don't even know how they do it. Because they have two or three right now. I don't know if they call them restaurants or what they do.
Okay, so is this the extent? And then beyond this, the bylaw consists of the definitions and then a use table? Is that what's below?
Right, the use table I put up here.
Okay.
So the Nano Brewery and the Brew Pubs were really smaller, so that I included in downtown business. I included the Nano Brewery and Brew Pub everywhere. We have a restaurant that includes alcoholic beverages pretty much. So I thought they'd be similar, because they're both small, but I actually put it by special permit. And I included it in industrial where the restaurants weren't. Microbrewery goes up to 15,000, and that one I just excluded from downtown, because I thought it might be too big. But we could start small and just have nano breweries or brew pubs and not do the 15,000. And then the larger one, brewery, distillery, or winery, which didn't have any limit on it, which is what other towns do, is an industrial only. So that's probably the larger capacity ones.
Amy, can I ask just one question?
Sure.
On your proposed table of uses in the industrial district, virtually every other use of the industrial district requires a special permit from the Planning Board.
Yeah.
And you've got it here as Board of Appeals.
Yep, sorry, I didn't.
I get the feeling you didn't want to do that.
No, I just made a mistake. But thank you. Are you? Now, Bob, do you live in Grafton or Milbury? Do you live around there?
I live in Grafton.
Do they have any brew pubs or breweries? I was just curious.
There are no specific brew pubs or breweries. Most of the places in town are restaurants and they will bring in, you know, beer from other ones. There is You know, beer from other ones. There is a. Little nano brewery in Upton. That has recently started up and they're doing very well from what I understand. And I think they would come under the classify, classification as nano brewery or brew pub. Because it's primarily, primarily a beer. Establishment and they sell food, you know, snacks and stuff on the side. Primary use is brewery. We don't have any of that in Grafton. You know, but we do have, you know. Like Cold Harbor, I think you can get at some of the bars, restaurants in town. Grafton's these days is primarily. Cannabis.
Had the definitions. That's why I was wondering if, if the definitions work for them.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen one, to be honest with you. I mean, I don't get out much to the local pubs. I'm not a beer type. But. You know, I, I don't see any, I don't know if anybody who's actually making beer in Grafton. You know, on any kind of a commercial level.
Okay, and are there other components to this or?
No, it's pretty much just the definition. And the use table.
Okay, and, and the definition for the micro brewery is in here or not in here?
Yep, it's underneath. It's the same thing. But it's fifteen thousand barrels except. All right, and for the nano, it says small scale production. And this doesn't say small scale.
Got it. Okay, any questions or comments from board members or staff?
I'd like to make a request. Any information that Amy is doing in her research? With other towns? That it comes back in writing from either the town planner. Oh, whoever she's getting it from. So we actually understand. What their zoning is there. So rather than, I was talking to somebody and somebody said this. I'd like to see it in writing. From whoever it is, whether it's the town planner. Or town engineer, when you're going out to do the research. That way we will understand when making a decision.
Sure, I'll reach out to the town planners in an email. There just wasn't enough time today. I, I, I kind of thought Kathy might have made some calls, so I. I didn't want to. Do the same thing. And overstep.
Okay, and also, just in terms of direction, are, are these, how do we feel about these levels? Does this look like? I know in the past, we talked about all sorts of different. Components, but does this seem like a good start for us in terms of giving it a go?
Well, I have a question. Can you just scroll to the top of that, that? Use table, Amy, so we can see the top? Because I was just curious as to whether there are. Any restrictions that would prohibit? I know most of the micro breweries or many of them have like food trucks and foods. Are, are there any above that would prohibit that type of? Use as well? Like does, is a food truck allowed in industrial? Or is food allowed in industrial?
So are food trucks in our bylaws? I don't think food trucks are even in our bylaws.
No, and sometimes cafeterias are allowed. In a warehouse, but it's an accessory use. So I guess that'd be a question for Bob more.
Well, you, by what you have here, hotel motel conference center. In the industrial district is special permit planning board. You're not going to have a hotel motel or conference center without sort of a commercial kitchen and food.
Okay, all right. Yep, and I put it under hospitality and food services because it made the most sense. Like there was retail sales. There was auto. You know, it, it just made the most sense. If anybody wants to go through their bylaws. And look at the different zones. Or the different uses. I can open it and read them all. So I had to pick where to put it.
Put on seven, seven dash forty-four. The page. Well, I'm mine, blue copy.
Through, through the chair. If I may, I think it's appropriately placed. Hospitality, food services, that sort of thing.
And so if you do look up this section, it's basically everything Amy has listed here with these three added at the bottom. So everything else is the same.
And I think if it went to town meeting, Kathy would normally cut out all the extra stuff. But I just listed it here to show what was in the. In the section. Usually she just gives like the three things.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like our primary questions are surrounding the production capacity. If we can get some clarity from. The emailing the town planner.
Okay, I'll do that. And I did email this, all these definitions out to everybody today.
Okay, so if anybody sees additional, has additional feedback, we can discuss that. Does this, well, before Amy goes to the trouble, does this seem like something we want to pursue to the next? Meeting? Yeah?
I'm on board.
Michelle, you okay with pursuing it?
Yeah, we just received this at three P M, so we need to have some more information.
All right, so we'll continue on the brewery journey. Thank you for pulling that together, Amy. Okay, next I have signs, and this is something that Anthony had brought forward. He sent it over. For everyone to review. I, I will pull it up. I don't know if I can do it a whole lot of justice, but. So that we can at least take a look at it together. Let's see. All right, can you see here signs? Ready, okay, great. So. This just looks like the bylaw in general. And then we don't have anything changing until we get to basic requirements. So again, I'm just going to go through what I'm seeing. I don't, I can't add a lot of. Insight to it, but at least we'll have a chance to look at it. So it looks like we're removing, the suggestion is to remove call attention to. No sign shall be a part, oh yeah, Bob.
I, I, this is the one document that I was able to get through today. Call attention to. I'm, I'm not sure what he's looking to do. By removing it. You know, it signs that advertise indicate the person occupying the premises. Or the business transacted thereon. That is all calling attention to. What's, what's happening on that property? I suppose. You know, that those three words are actually redundant in the grand scheme of things because. Calling attention to does advertise the person occupying, what's going on there? You know, the type of business is done. Number three that he's got, no sign shall be part of or attached to roofs. That is already in. The sign by law. In business districts. Okay. No roofs, no, no signs can be on any roof in any of the business districts within town. Okay, and by virtue of the residential, the signs of the residential districts. Signs aren't allowed there anyway. You couldn't do it. So. You know, sign, what he's proposing is redundant because we already have it. Okay. If you want to go down to number four. Wind driven, whirling, spinning. That's all flashing, moving and animated. We've always, or I've always said that. You know, anything that moves, whether it's on its own or by some other power like the wind. Is not an allowed use for signs. You know, most specifically, you see these tall pin feather type signs that looks like half a sail. We're always chasing those because people just stick them in the ground. The next thing you know, we're out there asking them to remove them. And we use this particular part of the zoning code to say that they're not allowed. One of the other things that he talks about, if I may jump ahead a little bit. Talks about. You know, neon ropes and things like that. And, you know, it draws attention. If it's obviously, if it's going to be a danger, I would ask somebody to take it down, you know, because it's, it's too much. It's arguable whether or not if it's a sign at all, whether it belongs in here. He. It was something else that I was going to say about that. No, I second only get to my notes. Okay, it's not a sign, it's a decoration. Oh, yeah. What would happen if somebody wanted to put balloons up for a day? On their business. I know that is balloons and. You know, the pennant banners and things like that, you know, that don't have any words on them. They're just. Visual. You know, there's no text on them. You know, but if somebody's having a grand opening or somebody's doing an open house on a. Residential open house. You know, they put a bunch of balloons up on the street corner. You know, are we really going to put up a big stink about that? I'm not sure. But, you know, L E D rope, strip lighting. You know, the, the little. Triangular pennant flags that you see on car dealerships. Blooms, you know, I mean, how, how deep into, into that do you want to get? Typically, we don't see them here in town. If. You know, we, we've got enough things like especially if they want to put them up in the air. Like those little triangular strips. Those typically aren't allowed. They need, you know, any type of a banner or temporary sign needs to be. Securely affixed to some sort of structure.
Clarify, when you say the triangle, the triangle strips, you're saying that's not even, that's not considered a sign or that's not allowed period, no matter what?
Well, I wouldn't allow it because I, I deem it as a danger. And I, you can't call it a sign because it doesn't have any text on it to draw your attention. Or delineate what's going on in that property. You know, it's, it's, it's a noise maker. It doesn't communicate anything. So, so, so there, there may be a. You know, there may be discussion around that.
Okay, does, does. Inflatables qualify under stuff like that?
Inflatables are not allowed.
Not allowed, okay.
Because they move. Like, like, like those giant inflatable thirty foot tall. Men that you see up here once in a while. Yeah, they're not allowed.
Thank goodness.
Okay, so I'm just going to scroll back to make sure. Did any other members have questions about? What we just looked at. I just want to make sure I capture, I captured Bob's notes here. Any other notes on? We have call attention to the attached roofs. Wind driven, whirling, spinning, I have notes for. And then we don't have any edits again for a little bit. Is there anything so far? Anything else we want to capture up here? Okay, and then down here we have the note about the L E D ropes, string or strip lighting.
Right. Back to, let's go backwards, number fourteen. Banner signs. Are currently allowed by special permit as a temporary sign. They're good for fifty-six days in any calendar year. And they are. Used to promote a grand opening or a special event. Like a, like a tent sale or. You know, a special sale for Apple Fest or, you know, we've got a new partner coming in or meet our new sales rep or whatever. Temporary permits banners are allowed by, with a permit, penance or not. And the question I would have is, how does that? How do we control that? Maybe used one time only for grand openings for thirty days or less. So if somebody wants to have a special sale or. A special event, you know, it's Rocky's fiftieth anniversary, can they put up a banner? Answer is no. If, if, if this goes through. So I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it, it to, to use Michelle's. Words unintended consequences may pop up with this particular. This, this, this particular thing.
Maybe instead of grand openings, it could be for special events.
If it's grand opening, special event, that sort of thing, that's already in. The, the sign by law that talks about temporary signs in the business districts.
What, what is trying to be prevented by limiting that? I guess would be my question. What are we trying to prevent by having that prohibited?
I'm just thinking.
I'm just curious, yeah.
Oh, I'm just thinking, um, the very beginning, the purpose of the sign by law. It talks about the very last. Sentence is simplicity and design and restrained use of signs are necessary. To prevent a sign overload which creates clutter. And is as confusing as no signs at all. Like, I'm just thinking of myself here because when we started thinking about the sign by law, I drove up and down Main Street and there were certain. Places where I took pictures. Definitely have sign overload, whether it's banners and. All the stickers on the windows. And, and as a, you know, a person driving by. I don't think it, it adds anything to the store to have. A million stickers and. Signs all over the front of it.
So it sounds like the purpose is to prevent overuse, but not stop people from being able to announce a special event. Like if they had a fiftieth anniversary, I don't think we're looking up that sign, so.
Well, the, the, the way it's written right now. It, it, it does have some measure of control. And that any kind of banner or temporary sign is limited to no more than fifteen per feet. Which is only three feet by five feet. It's relatively small. And you're limited to fifty-six days in a calendar year. So if you've got a business that occasionally runs, say they run a seasonal. Say, say they run sales four times a year. You know, they've got one permit that covers them for the year. It's fifty-six days. You know. I, I, I drive all up and down the boardways too. If I see the thing out there every darn day. They've got an issue, you know, but typically we leave it to. The business owner to be on the honor system. And if they want to. You know, re-sign for the next year to do it again, they need to pull another permit. I think that one, maybe two. In town to do that. Currently, and they don't do it with banners. They do it with like the little A frame signs. Which again, is a temporary sign. It's permitted and it's regulated.
All right, let's see. Any other comments up here?
The, the only other one I have, and I've got to kind of take it from two different spots. One is he, Anthony talks about backlit signs, you know, in the business areas. And in his cover letter for. The email that went out attached to this, basically was talking about. You know, if this, if this was to pass at town meeting, every existing sign right now. Would be. I hate to use the term, but grandfather could be pre-existing. And the way the bylaw is written for signs is that. If they're maintaining the sign and they're only. Changing the sign in terms of refreshing the paint because it's faded or if it's broken. That does not constitute a new sign. A new sign is when there is new text. A new owner comes in. But if you're refreshing an existing sign that's already there. That is repaired, does not qualify as, as, as a permissible. Sign. So that's one of the things that. You know, he, he mentioned in. His covering email. You know, talks about these signs have to conform to these updates. You know, talks about these signs have to conform to these updates when being replaced or wholly repaired. Again, that is already kind of a a a provision we have in the sign by law. Whereas if you just refresh it, what's already there? No permits required. We get those phone calls quite often. Any type of change to the text or the logos or the name of the business or a new business is a whole new sign. Okay, and that's when, if this were to pass, we would have to have them, you know, redesign the signs. Would not be internally illuminated. There was one more thing. And then I'm gonna shut up because I've been talking way too much.
I just wanted to speak to that when Bob is done.
Yeah. You'd have to go down another page or two. To residential district, no illuminated signs.
I have a question on that.
Okay, hold on, did I pass it? And I did, yeah, okay. Number three, as an industrial highway business. Business East. This, up here.
Uh, yeah, right here. He wants to cross out that sentence and a half where the exceptions are. What he wants to do is, and he wants to cross out the phrase, a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming business use. That will probably be flagged by the attorney general because if it's lawfully pre-existing, it's allowed to continue in its maintained state until they change the business use or they change the sign or or something like that. So I think that one's going to have some structural issues in terms of approval by the AG's office.
So we currently don't allow illuminated signs in a residential district, except for those conditions, right?
Right.
Okay, so if I were to have like my private drive sign with a light at the bottom, is that, that's landscape lighting, right?
With that landscape lighting, that's landscape lighting and directional. That's not something I would worry about. I mean, it's, if if it's got a house number and a light in it. I think that's more of a a a safety thing because, you know, numbers are required.
Sure, okay.
You know, as as a first responder, if I saw a lit sign at the end of a long driveway, I'd be really happy.
Yeah, okay, that's that's what I was, my only thought on that one.
Yeah. But, you know, here it's talking about a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming business use. So if somebody does have a a home business that's legally pre-existing, non-conforming, you can't make them take the sign down.
Okay. I wonder what this was trying to solve, like, do we see this anywhere or maybe we can ask for an example of where.
Yeah, that's again.
All right, and I didn't see any others through here.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, Amy, you said you had a follow-up to one as well.
Yeah, um, after I received Anthony's, I was reading through it. And then I was going through different towns to review the brewery bylaws. So while I was in their zoning, I was checking out their signs. Bylaws and one thing I did find, if, let me see, I'm gonna pull up my document for myself here. If they did want to change what, like you mentioned, no illuminated signs or backlit signs. I do think what I've seen in other towns is a section where it talks about non-conforming signs. I'm just trying to find it. I would add something on the bottom, non-conforming signs. And what I read today was any non-conforming sign and or support structure legally permitted and erected prior to the adoption of this provision or any amendments thereto, which remains unaltered, oh, that continue to maintain, that's what we have. Non-conforming signs shall not be enlarged, rebuilt, restored or altered, except in conformity with this bylaw. So I think if the point that he wanted to make was to change the signs, you'd have to put a section on non-conforming signs in. There's only two or three sections, and I I just started, I just got Anthony's today too. So I was gonna add in some of my updates and send it out for the next meeting.
So are you asking on non-conforming signs that would be grandfathered to become conforming if they have to be redone?
Well, like Bob said, our bylaw kind of already says that. Yeah, any sign that's not being maintained in its exact form, like any sign that say it's like five square feet and becomes ten square feet, well, now it's being altered, and so it would have to conform. Or if it if the person sold their business, I think you would have to conform because now the lettering is changing. And even letters being altered is considered a change of sign.
Well, it would, that would, that would constitute a new sign.
Yeah.
And any new sign would have to adhere to the current
To the new bylaw.
Sign by law. So it's, you know, while I understand what you're saying, it's 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 built into the to the idea of having bylaws in the first place.
It's built in, but I think just adding the one sign would make it obvious. And then I thought it made sense where Anthony added in scrolling down, electric message centers, number twelve are specifically prohibited. Because we talked about that at the last meeting. And Bob and Kathy thought, well, no, electronic message centers are allowed, but they're really not. They're only allowed in highway and industrial. But the only place it says that is in a little, in a sentence underneath highway signs and industrial signs. The other business signs, it doesn't say anything, so it's kind of left out. So if not permitted, then prohibited. But I think it does make sense, just to call it out, electronic message centers are specifically prohibited in downtown business, Business East, Business West, Business South, because that's what we intended when we went to town meeting. I went back and I read the meeting minutes from two thousand and eighteen. And it's what we asked the bylaw to say. So I think it doesn't hurt.
Written that way. So why wasn't it written that way?
I don't know, you and Kathy wrote it, I guess.
No, I didn't write it.
Well, no, remember you, um, you and Kathy did all that with the electronic messaging sign with all the numbers and the
Yeah, the numbers, but I didn't, I wasn't worried or specifically involved with, you know, where these belong. That's up for the planning board to figure out and make sure you have it right when you go to town meeting.
Well, we said it, and Kathy must have written it, but, and it's written in there, but it's hidden. It's like, it's deep down into the weeds, so I think having it as number twelve pulls it out.
If you can show me that where it is existing, I'd love to see it because I'm 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 missing it.
Where it is written in the bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, um, do you want me to share my screen?
You don't have to do it tonight, just just so I have background information, because it's it's a mystery to me.
Okay, if you go down to Highway Business District, under A, with freestanding signs, it says electronic message centers may be used as part of a freestanding sign. So it's spelled out, but it's not spelled out in the business districts. It's only there for industrial and and for highway. So instead of saying it's prohibited in the other three, it just says it's allowed in the other two. Do you have it right there, Bob?
I'm I'm looking, I'm looking.
Okay, yep.
I've never been good at looking up stuff when I'm in the middle of a meeting.
We don't put pressure on, we can, if you find us, let us know, or if Amy, you're gonna.
It's just a background. Highway Business District.
Yeah.
I do believe we lost Melanie, so I don't know if she was taking meeting minutes.
Oh, okay. She she would be, but also she doesn't show the recording, she. Wait, where are you getting that from, Amy?
Um, this is from if you go to Signs and Business Districts. And then it goes to downtown Business East. Highway Business. So I can't even find it in the book.
Yeah, curious, just curious.
Yep. So in the latest book I have, I go to page seven, one oh four.
Oops, there's Melanie.
Page seven, one oh four, and you see Highway Business District. Under A, the last sentence says fifty square feet of changeable cost, electronic message centers may be used as part of a freestanding sign. It only has that in highway and industrial because that's what we wanted. And it's left off of the other districts. But I think it makes more sense to call it out at the top because, you know, people, it's a lot of writing, I mean, reading to go through.
Right.
It's easier if it's just obvious.
Another thing I wanted to talk about is took Anthony's and then had questions to mine. A lot of the districts, it says wall sign shall not exceed thirty two square feet in the area. I I was wondering if we should really think about that, instead of thirty two square feet, it should be probably a percentage of the wall, because every wall is different. You can have a really small building downtown and thirty two square feet is huge on that wall. Or you go up to Wegmans. And there are thirty two square feet, while sign is too small, so they have to go and ask for a variance from the ZBIA.
That's those are those signs up in that industrial district area are allowed a hundred square feet. But but you're right. The wall signs up there, we get a lot of variance applications for larger than a hundred square feet up in the shops district. I think the ZBIA has issued two or three of them in the past few years.
Yeah.
One of the things that some other towns do is in terms of the width of the sign, it's, and it doesn't have much to do with square footage, but it's usually a third of the width of the facade. So if the front of the building was a hundred feet at the street, you would be allowed to assign maximum size for the sign, for a single sign, would be thirty three feet.
Yeah.
You know, but what we do have in town is a lot of multi-tenant buildings. And I don't know if confining, you know, a tenant to a third of their space would be sufficient enough signage. You see what I'm saying?
I definitely think there's something I have to look into because it's a fine line. It's like, you don't want it small, but you also don't want it too big, where it's the whole wall of the building, if it's a small building. Because people driving by nowadays, I mean, I know when I'm driving through town, I'm not looking out my right side window to see what signs are on the the walls of the building, so it just seems like it's additional signs. You usually type your address into your GPS and it brings you to where you're going. Either that or you're from Northburn, you know where you're going. But it seems to have the sign out front and then signs on the walls. And then it just seems to start to get cluttered with all signs.
So is your suggestion here to think about this as a percentage or that's not the suggestion?
Yeah, no, that's what I was thinking about, maybe a percentage. And that way, the bigger buildings, you'd be able to see it, and the smaller buildings, it wouldn't be so big. There has to be like a percentage.
And you think standard is one third of the building's facade, so.
Um, I I've seen that in other towns. I know Milbury has something about that. And it was specific to the Blackstone Valley Shops. When I was, when I was working in Milbury, it it was a mixture of square footage for the sign, plus the overall width couldn't be a third of the tenant's base.
Wow, so both.
Yeah, that was, that was a special sign package that was in the master permit for the that entire shopping area. You know, they had their own sign regulations for the, just that one big project.
Which kind of makes sense, well, like even with ours, because some of the buildings are really big.
Yeah, we don't have that here. All it is is a use, you know, it's 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 industrial slash MCOD overlay district.
Yeah.
You know, nothing knows what we have to use.
Right. So I didn't have time to look at it, and you probably didn't either, but I don't know if that's something for next week or next meeting. We could try to come up with a percentage of versus thirty two square feet.
Okay, so I'm gonna add that, I'm gonna send this back over his way, so he knows, anything else that we wanna provide for feedback here?
Well, one thing that I saw in other towns too is, and I'm not trying to take it away from Bob. But when I first started on the planning board, a lot went into the sign and what it looked like. We had to have who made the sign. But lately, I don't know if it's because everybody's gone so busy, the sign is kind of like tossed aside and said, oh, it will be decided with the sign permit. But when I first started on the planning board, there was a lot of part of the site plan, there was a lot of detail going into what the sign would look like. And I'm not sure that's happening. And a lot of towns, what I was looking at for the brewery, when I looked at the signs, they said the signs had to be, go through design review.
Well, one of the things that's happened, you know, here in Northbro is that most recently, any kind of signage from, in terms of the special permit granting authority, the signs have been literally left up to the standard sign bylaws in 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 the rulebook, you know, so that's all we really have to go by. To my, to my knowledge, there hasn't been, since I've been here, which is almost coming up on five years. I don't know if there's been any sign requirements, one way or another, either from design review or any of the special permit granting authorities. I mean, if 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 the SBGAs want to put that in and and have the designer review looked at and the whole thing, it's fine by me. It 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 literally, it makes my job easier.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe we do that and have like, the other towns had, where it went to design review and there was, we can think about as a planning board or zoning board, there can be like a check sheet of what the applicant needs to submit.
Are you saying this for any and every sign that goes up, like the temporary ones, or you
No.
To certain ones?
Not temporary.
Every every sign that goes up, you know, through through my department, you know, there's an application.
Yeah.
You know, the name, I checked, I double-checked and make sure that the zoning district is correct. I go straight to the book and see what is allowed. It's a wall sign of the downtown business district. It's allowed to be thirty two square feet, you know, and it needs to be a certain height off, you know, can't be a certain height off the road. It cannot be on a roof, it can't be on a awning, it can't be on a marquee or anything like that. And and if it meets all of the requirements in the book, I issue the permit.
Yeah.
And then I go out and inspect it and make sure they installed it as 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 applied for.
And so which ones, Amy, are you saying you are proposing to go through design review?
Well, mostly at a new building, I just, I'm using an example, when I first started, Mo's Auto Repair was going in. And there was a big to-do about the sign, like the sign, the person who was doing the sign actually came to the meeting and they talked about, you know, how big the sign was and what the sign was gonna look like. And I just feel like that's fallen off the radar lately. Lately.
Okay, so for new buildings, you're saying they used to go through design review and you guys or design review would.
Millie, can I clarify?
Yeah, please.
A new out, an applicant who's building a building, I've been on the board eighteen years. You go back from CVS or even the applicant that Amy's mentioning. They go before the design review committee, right? And as part of that, you talk about signage, right? Sometimes the applicant might not know who his tenants are. But we'll let you know where the signage is gonna be, what it's gonna look like. So that's always been done, right? If you have a standalone like CVS, they'll often show you what their signage is going to be, right? Um, in the case of Mo's, as Amy was saying, often when they go to the design review committee. That same group of individuals that have presented to the design review committee. Then present to the planning board. Probably at that time, Amy was new. And they probably showed at that time what the signage was gonna look like. By the way, at that time, it was an electronic messaging board that was approved by the board at that time. And so that's the process that's always followed through. It's, it's never dropped off, it's always gone through the design review committee. Unless at that point, they don't know whether tenant's gonna be a dentist or an attorney or. What professional use is gonna be there or the name of the restaurant. At that point, they would tell the design review committee and they also tell the planning board at that time. We don't know who our attendant is gonna be. And then Bob Federico and staff will say, well, here's the process you can go through as far as you follow the bylaw which you approved here. So that's the process, it's not that no one's talking about it, it's always been talked about for years. And when they know who the applicant is. It's always presented at design review, approved at design review, discussed at design review. Filtered through at design review and then the same process happens at the planning board when the applicant presents it.
Make for fifty.
So I have a question also with regards to Bob Federico, I have a question. On number three on, I'm not sure what page it's on. It's under F in residential districts. What do you define as an illuminated sign? What's illumination mean to you? Does that mean? I have a standalone sign right now and I have floodlights highlighting it. When it gets dark out, what does that, what does that mean to you? No illuminated signs, what does that?
No illuminated sign for me, and this could run both ways, is no lights around it.
Okay.
Period. I mean, you have externally illuminated or internally illuminated or not illuminated. So. You know, if you want to. You know, it, it, those distinctions need to be made because I think one of the things that. Anthony was, was, was intending on was having the signs be. Externally illuminated, I'm, I'm, I'm probably putting words in his mouth, but that's my gut in terms of where I think he was going with this. You know, having the backlit signs and things like that. But that's, that's a big thing to change because right now. Most of the signs need to be done, that's physically attached to the building. Needs to be individual cut letters. And those are usually LEDs lit from the inside. Um, so you know, it, this, just by striking out certain sections of this. You know, he's only done about a tenth of the work, he's gonna go back and change the actual design of the sign. Uh, words, words listed in the book.
So the reason that I'm bringing this up, Bob, is that this has significant impact on very, many parcels of land within town. So, um, that means you could have. A sign that's there with externally lit it at night. And that's going to in fact, impact.
Well, in residential district, no aluminum sign shall be permitted.
Except it has a pre-existing, they already exist in town. Right, and so he wants them, the ones that exist in town, he does not want any lights on them. After four PM.
Right.
In the residential.
In the residential.
Okay, is there an instance where we would want residential signs illuminated?
In pre-existing, yes.
Okay, so, so getting back to this one, your comment is, if it's similar to Bob, but different reasoning, you're both saying that if it's pre-existing non-conforming. It should be allowed.
Absolutely.
Pre-existing non-conforming by its, by its definition under forty-eight. Is that. You cannot. You cannot order somebody to take a sign down or stop the use of the sign. Um, simply because you passed the law saying and it's no longer allowed, okay, they, the, the, the owner of the sign. Would have to either take it down or apply for a new sign or a different design of sign. Um, we, we can't send him a letter saying, now that we've passed a new regulation, you've got to take it out.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to know.
And so to the chair, let me give you a good example of why maybe he wasn't. Didn't know what he was doing when he was writing this. A, a major pre-existing non-conforming business is Davidian's Farm Stand. Davidian's Farm Stand could not have any lights highlighting their sign. It's a pre-existing, it's a residential area, it's a standalone sign, they have floodlights on it. By doing this, you then shut off and darken their sign.
Okay.
So you need to look at, these are unintended consequences. That the board needs to look at on how they're impacting their business community.
It is, that's not a pre-existing non-conforming business though, it's a. It, but it is a pre-existing non-conforming sign because the, the pre-existing non-conforming is for the business. Is that correct?
Well, you can have a pre-existing non-conforming business and a pre-existing non-conforming sign, but they're not, because they're agriculture.
The business though.
Yeah, they're agricultural, so.
Actually, there are other ones in town that you're going to impact, you guys need to do your homework.
Okay, so it sounds like your feedback on that one is just to think about other businesses in residential areas that could be impacted if we cross that out. And likewise, Bob has feedback that that may not fly anyway because the AG is gonna look at that and think that that's not possible, period.
Yeah.
Okay, so I captured both of those comments. I, I have a really quick question, I think, that is there a difference between a, an internally lit sign and a backlit sign?
Yes.
What is, what is the difference? Just out of curiosity.
And, and externally illuminated sign is, think of it as, you know, painting a sign on a sheet of plywood.
Oh, I meant internally lit.
Internally lit.
And backlit.
It's lit from the back, internally lit is basically lit from the back, so there's a, a light box, if you will. With electronics and a light bulb in it. And then the sign is actually nothing more than a panel.
Right.
Back dark ages, it looks like a slide, you know, acts like it, the light comes from behind it. And that's, and that's how it's lit from internal, you know, inside the box.
But is that the same as a backlit sign?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
Because it's lit from the back of the sign as opposed to the front of the sign.
Alright, so they're interchangeable.
Yes.
Terms, okay. Okay, any other comments on this one? So, um, Amy, I know you had your copy up, but in the, say, at the same time, I was taking notes on the copy that I already added comments to, so. That's, I'll share that with Anthony. But then if you don't mind sharing your amendments too, it'll help just maybe as a. Yeah.
These are just notes. Um, right now, we have definition signs, basic requirements, I was just thinking. Adding the non-conforming signs if, if this is what the board decides to go through it. Which is the B sentence that I, I read out loud before. It wouldn't go here, it would go at the bottom, but those are my notes. Um, that's just the highlight. I don't think I had anything else, I just wanted to talk about the. Sign percentage. And I can. Oh, this is the part with the design review board, if we want to add that back in. This is what a different town had.
Okay, so if you share, I put a note in my version that you had additional amendments to share, so if you just can share that.
Sure, I think that was the only thing right now and I can share anything that. I really just, you know, we just got it this morning. So those were my quick first looks.
Okay. Alright, great, so I will send that back his way and then on to the next one, so we have. Remind me, so at the last meeting, I wasn't able to stay for the full meeting. We had on the table at some point, the commercial either doing an overlay or adding uses, did we decide anything there at the last meeting? Is this bylaw still on the table?
What was it? Sorry.
It was where the, um, commercial district, I'm sorry, the commercial, yes, that's right, the commercial districts, we talked about adding. No, industrial, we talked about adding a commercial overlay to industrial districts or opening up new uses in industrial.
Yeah, I don't think we, we didn't talk about it any further.
Okay, so it doesn't, oh, you know what, this was Anthony as well, so he didn't send anything for that, so I don't know if there's any further. Actions or thought on this one. I think the spirit of this one was. How do we allow other uses in industrial without, of course, like opening a can of worms, but at the same time. You know, we, we've been getting the same types of businesses over and over again, so is there an opportunity, like in the past, we did the, the gym. And then we were able to have on Cedar Hill the soccer field or, you know, are there different uses we can allow that would. Give us more opportunities in industrial, I don't know if we thought about that at all or any thoughts on that now?
I tried to look today too when I was going through the other bylaws. I mean, just what other towns did was. They, they list what's allowed in residential, then they list what's allowed in commercial. And then. There were a few things in industrial and they said everything in commercial. Plus the few things they added in industrial, but we're a different town, so that might have overreaching. You know, all bylaws are so different, a lot of them even in industrial have building sizes like. They allow a grocery store, but it can only be between twenty and forty thousand square feet. So it probably needs more thought.
Okay. And you mean, okay. In, in conjunction with what was mentioned with the MPIC, that would be, I think, a. More productive.
Yep.
Okay.
What I did mention though at the last meeting when you weren't here is. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is doing. At least they're gonna look at it, for our next meeting, they're talking about a check sheet. Of items that they might ask the consultant to do. And right now, they all are downtown. But I was wondering if part of the process, we could ask them, they were gonna do a market study. Of what type of. What type of uses would be good in the downtown area? And I was thinking while they're hiring that firm, could ask maybe for a quote with. How much would it be to do a market study of our industrial while we're doing it, you know, and that way we'd be ready for next year. Because if we only have a handful of things allowed in industrial. And we get complaints about certain things, maybe we want a market analysis to say, okay. What are other towns doing or what do you think Northbro should be adding into our industrial area? So I don't know how much a market analysis is. But I was just, if we had the consultants and they're going through the process. I thought maybe it'd be, maybe I'll ask MPIC. If they decided to mark an analysis, can we do it not only for the downtown but for the industrial district?
Okay.
I don't know. It's up to the board, I actually wondered if the board. Wanted to, if, if we wanted to write a memo asking if they would consider it. Or since we're the liaisons, we can just bring it up, either way.
Yeah, maybe just, I mean, I don't care either way, I'm just, if you just bring it up as a. What, do you prefer one way or the other, is one way easier for you or?
I don't know, I don't know, because right now it's in downtown, so they might say to wait, which will leave us hanging. So, I don't know.
Okay, um, well, any thoughts on board, the board members wanting something like that, is it helpful to us so that, you know. It's difficult for us to blanket uses on without information, is this, would this information be helpful for us to open up industrial? I, I don't know that it would hurt, but I don't want to waste a lot of time or money on something either that we don't really have a, a sense of. Of, um, direction on. Or what we get.
I think, I think that's what they would. We would ask them.
I think the role of Amy and Millie's role on the master implementation committee is to have these discussions with the other members. So I think first they need to have the discussion, have you guys had the discussion?
Well, it's really, the master plan is really. Um, well, Michelle, for, for CPC, housing went forth for housing and they did not have the discussion. With master plan implementation, so. Right now, and Open Space has been doing things that didn't go in front of the master plan implementation, so. I was having a discussion with our board. If we thought it would be worthwhile to bring it up with them. That we'd want a market analysis of the industrial. Or do we just.
That you'd want to have a discussion with the master plan implementation committee about what's the process? If they were gonna do it, would you get the feedback in time? Are they gonna, is there ample time to do it later on in the year? I just think you should have that discussion with the master plan committee.
Yep, but what a lot of boards are trying to do is they're checking off their action items if they can, it's not all. A major discussion.
Okay, so it sounds like what's on the table is, do we want some sort of analysis on industrial? So that we can make a better informed decision of what we could possibly add to industrial, is that. Is that what they would accomplish?
Yeah, it's a market analysis.
So do we actually, when they do the market analysis on downtown, is that, do we have any details on what that consists of and maybe that'll help us think of like. Time, how long that takes or costs or anything at all, or we don't even know what is involved with the downtown analysis.
Right. I think at our next meeting, they're going to, they had a checklist of all the items. That they could do and they're gonna get back to us with which ones we were doing. But I did ask them at the last meeting, master plan. How much all of it would come to, but I don't know, I don't know if you remember Millie, if that included everything on the list or just the design study? I can't remember.
I, I think it was the initial design study. So what did that cost? We didn't really know what downtown was gonna be, so that was kind of the first element of what's our, where is our downtown? They really weren't gonna give us a quote until we get, had some of that.
Hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so.
So, so the, the consultant for master plan is, is guiding the process on master plan and also quoting out additional services?
Hmm. But I don't know if they're all gonna be through that person, VHB or FIS quoting it out, so I guess we can wait till the, after the next master plan. And maybe he'll break them down by price. And we can get a sense of how much a market analysis is. Because before Kathy left, she even mentioned the planning board has money. So if that's something we feel is important and maybe we don't.
Well, also, I don't know why that doesn't go to RFP, I don't know, I, I guess that's something I'll follow up on.
It, it probably will go to RFP, they're just, he's coming up with the scope.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so maybe we'll have more information, if they, if, we will at least know what kind of the price range we're talking about, what kind of timeline we're talking about and then. See, in the meantime, does it sound like the board is interested in. Entertaining any sort of bylaw related to industrial or no?
I don't think so because. I don't think we're at that point.
Okay. Yeah, Michelle, same, do you feel the same way?
You don't have any information to develop a bylaw this short period of time for town meeting.
Okay, so you feel the same way not to.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, and Millie, you as well. Alright, so we'll revisit that, let me just write some notes there. Okay, um, next on my list, I have the moratorium slash definition, so I'm gonna pull that up. Yeah, I don't know if you got a chance last time to take a look at it. Let's see, okay, can you see path one revisit definitions up here?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, in the past, we've obviously talked about two different pathways, either thinking more, thinking a little bit more about the definition. Either thinking more, thinking a little bit more about the definitions that we have or potentially. Uh, moving towards a moratorium. And the point of a moratorium would be to take a period of time with specific goals to investigate. You know, what, what are the issues happening? How can we better prevent them? What can we do as a town? How can we make sure we don't keep getting the same results over and over again by just putting the things in place that protect us as a town? And that would be done through the moratorium process. So I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at this. I sent it before the last meeting, but um, open to comments and feedback. And what do we have here? So any thoughts on, is it the definitions that we need, that we should look at? Or is it, do we truly need some sort of moratorium here? Is everyone on mute?
Yeah, now I'm just trying to. Process, yeah.
Well, I guess one thing.
I mean, can you do one without the other? If, if you're changing the definition.
Oh yeah, I think in my mind, and I don't know if you guys disagree or not. Um, either we revisit the definitions or we take a moratorium. And we could at that time, look at our, as part of what we come up with a, a solution, look at our definitions. Yeah, I just, one thing we talked about before is, what are the issues that we're seeing that we'd be trying to solve with a moratorium? So obviously we're not just looking to shut down a use and then come back and say, oh, okay, that, you know, solved it, that put a Band-Aid on it. I mean, we'd have to decide as a board that we think there are serious traffic or safety hazards that are impacting the town. And we need, we can't just keep doing what we're doing. We need a solution. We need time to sit down and come up with a solution. Is that the way we feel about it? Or do we think it can be solved? You know, do we, I don't think definition solves necessarily the. If, if we believe there are traffic and safety hazards, they're significant enough. I don't think, so Millie, that maybe that's what you're getting at. I don't think definition solves that.
Right.
It was just two different paths that we talked about in general.
I mean, I do think that it's important to get the data that would support. Are seeking a moratorium, because if you're gonna go to town with this, there are people gonna ask. Why are you doing this? What's happening? And what are you trying to? What are you trying to accomplish?
That's a great point. I wondered if, um, for part of that, you know, we had CMR PC do that audit. Where they came through Bartlett Street and they looked at specific areas and they pulled all this data together. And, and some of it was concerning, some of it, um, I think we've. Things have been done along the way that have helped alleviate it a little bit, like we have the Boris Lockman just put in the safety zone.
Right.
You know, little things like that, the, um, the engine brake signs are up now. I think Amazon and a couple of the others over there have been working hard to get people to take the right turns. So I. You know, we have all of that in place, but then. When we look at the data. From CRM RPC from that audit and then maybe some regional data. It seems like towns are taking the time to stop and look at this and figure out. I mean, I'd love to be able to sit down regionally and look at this, but I, I don't think that's what this moratorium will necessarily accomplish. What do we do if two more warehouses, trucking and distributions or, I'm sorry. Transportation and distribution uses come in. Or three more, four more, like, will our Band-Aids that we're doing now? Stretch to cover that or are we gonna be in big trouble? I don't know.
Well, one of the questions I had is that when towns have something like subdivisions come in, they phase them in. So that. The municipal services, schools and those amenities aren't overloaded. So is there a way to maybe? Install that type of situation where you have? Cause I, I kinda looked previously and I'm not sure if I have my numbers right, but. The biggest issue was that we had so much square feet of distribution and warehousing come on board in such a short period of time. And so. Is there a way to? Maybe. Manage that going forward so that we're not in that, that same situation? I, I, at, at least that's what I, I'm understanding is, is part of the. Where, why we are where we are at on this.
Millie?
Yeah.
I think an answer to your question is, have you looked at Solomon Pond Mall versus e-commerce? And that answers your question.
Meaning. Uh, yes, I know.
Percent of shopping.
Yeah, no, and I get that. I.
What's happened over the past.
Yeah.
You know, three to four years. The transition.
Yeah, and it's just really, really. Very sudden and accelerated, and I think that it's going to continue.
So are our bylaws in a place that protects us? In the, in this extreme case of, you know, accelerated e-commerce growth. Are we in a spot where our bylaws keep us above it or are we trailing behind it? And what can we do to at least keep pace if not get ahead?
Well, I think all warehouses aren't created equal, so I do think. They have to be defined. But, um.
Okay.
But then it's what do you allow, like? Does your town hit a point where you have so many? Trucking bays? That you go for something else?
We are ideally located for a lot of these distribution. Uh, businesses, so. That's a fact.
Hmm, but Marlboro is too on the other side and they don't have all trucking. You know, could have a mix. Like, which is why you have permitted uses, special permit uses. And. Prohibited. When you reach a certain amount, sometimes you say, okay, now we want something different.
I mean, is it worth taking a public hearing? To see what we get for feedback in general?
I think we would need a moratorium to figure out. What, you know, what has to be done. I know when I, I was on that panel. In Spencer, was it Spencer? No, it was Sutton. The woman, I mean, I think they worked two years. To work out the right way for FedEx to come in. Or not for Amazon. It wasn't just, they came forward. And they were automatically in and then you backpedaled. It, it went to town meeting and then it got rejected. And then they had to do it again. They actually had to write a bylaw to allow. There, I think it's a. The last mile. But the first time they did it, they went to town meeting and their town meeting actually denied it. So it took two years to figure out what they wanted to do. Where ours is kind of like an open warehouse. And someone comes in and then we backpedal. But I don't know how we fix it. So I think that's what. A moratorium might do, right? You work with CM RPC and.
Carrie, can you just repeat what you said?
Uh, I, I was just gonna speak. I didn't say it yet, so I don't know.
You did, your last statement that you made. You said, should we hold a public hearing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, should we?
You're holding a public hearing in March.
Well, that's what I mean. Should we bring this to a public hearing in March?
Well, I guess, if you're gonna have it as a bylaw, you have to present as a public hearing, I guess. I, I didn't understand that.
Oh, yeah. No, I just meant, um, you know, rather than if we pick, so say tonight, we say, oh, we don't, we're just not gonna do it. We don't know what to do. You know, do we want additional public input? Like just progress it forward and get some input on it?
Oh, I, I thought you meant like a special meeting.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, no.
No, that was my.
Um, what was I gonna say then? Oh, Amy, you brought up a good point about the last mile piece because. Maybe too, what we're not doing is we, and this is maybe the point you're trying to make, that. We have it such at a high level that we don't have it drilled down to, like, maybe we don't. Mind the X, Y, and Z, but it's something like a last mile that we can't talk, that we can't bear the traffic of. Or it's, you know, it's those certain levels that we can't really absorb well. But maybe we could, if it's just a warehouse with medical supplies, that doesn't impact us in the same way. So that's really hard to get around, I feel like.
Right, well, I think there's, if you go up to the definitions. One is the building related facilities where goods, products or materials owned by a single entity. So I think like, it might even be in Northborough. Don't we have one for Lowe's? Over in Westborough where it's like a storage facility and they store all their stuff. Extra materials. Is that true Fred or? But that's different than an Amazon last mile. A warehouse.
Yes, it is different than the Amazon last mile. Uh, there is a building in Northborough. That. A portion of it is used for housing materials, uh, that are. Distributed through Lowe's Home Improvement Stores. I don't think Bob could help me out, but I don't think the whole building is utilized for that. That purpose. No, excuse me, um. No, it's not. Um, I think only a third of the building or forty percent of the building. Is used by that one particular tenant. Uh, the other. Tenant spaces is used, I believe, by, uh. Um, Metri, which is a, uh, a wood molding. Warehouse and distribution center. They, and they. Distribute primarily to, um, you know, lumberyards and Lowe's and Home Depot and. You know, National Lumber and Cootman Lumber and things like that. You can't just drive in there as a. Uh, Saturday Joe homeowner or even a contractor for that matter and pick up materials.
Hmm, but it probably has. Less trucks coming in and out than say in the Amazon. Last mile.
I have no idea. I mean, it's, it's, it's probably a safe guess, but it's, it's, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not the accounting trucks.
Is this three oh one we're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, so. I guess getting back to the, the heart of the matter, Amy, was there something else you wanted to look at?
No, but I guess they're not all created equal, so if we did redo our bylaws. For warehouses, we could break them down. To different kinds and you could probably could. You know, if you wanted to allow one last mile, but not. I don't know, or no last miles because we already have the middle mile. I think that would be something to talk about with CM RPC though. Cause they've been working with a lot of different towns on this.
For sure. Is, so then is this something, is what we need to do to our bylaws and, you know, staying ahead of this? Is it a moratorium that helps solve this or what can we do as a planning board?
I mean, we did the moratorium for duplexes. We did it for marijuana. We did it for solar. Didn't make or break the town. I say we bring it to town meeting and see what the people want.
Okay.
Actually, I wanna clarify that, Amy. You did the moratorium on duplexes. And when we came back. Then the first applicant, you denied it. And now you're in court with them.
Well, that's because the applicant. The applicant wrote a waiver.
Did not work.
That was allowed at the very last minute and I actually didn't agree with the waiver. And Eva did Judy Barrett. Who was our? Um, we hired her as a consultant. And three of the board members went against her. Suggestion. And I wasn't one of them.
Okay. Alright. So. Do we want to bring this forward and see what the town thinks? Or even, you know, get feedback at the. Scheduled public hearing for this purpose? It sounds like.
Bringing it forward.
Okay, and Amy, you're.
To get more information.
Yeah, I'm wondering if for the next meeting. We also write an article for the definitions and you could have both in there and then if the moratorium goes through. You pass over the one behind it. But if the moratorium doesn't go through, then you don't pass over. That's happened before too. We did that for the marijuana. Marijuana had a follow-up that got passed over because the first one went through.
Alright, so I don't, I can take that on as an action item to create some additional definitions. And if anyone has suggestions, I think we heard last mile. Um, Michelle, is e-commerce, is it, uh, something you think, um, definition wise? Is that what you had mentioned?
I'm just. I, I'm actually reviewing what you're sending to me, but what you're doing here is you're affecting. E-commerce throughout the town, the potential growth. How to move forward. So. You know. I don't really understand what the problem is. I don't think you and Amy seem to be the person backing this. I don't think you've identified what the problem is. I think, you know, you're just concerned about the last few lots that are left to be built up. That are now. So. I think you need more information. As Millie said, when she opened up in the meeting. What is the problem? What are the traffic problems? Where's the data? How are you gonna convince people at town meeting?
Yeah, for sure.
Presented that yet.
Um, no, it's a great point. I think we definitely need to pull that together and make a compelling case for it. Um, but the question at hand is, is that if that doesn't pass, what definitions do we want? And I'm asking you if you want e-commerce, some sort of e-commerce definition included.
Yeah, I think you should have e-commerce, but this is all e-commerce. These three definitions are e-commerce.
Okay, so that satisfies the point that you were making before. I just wanna make sure your feedback is incorporated as well. And it sounds like Amy, you mentioned last mile. Any, so if any others, if you can't think of any now, um, feel free to send them over. And then in the interim, I'll go back and I'll, I'll take on the action to just add some definitions here. So if we, you know, we come to a point where we decide, we can either decide to move forward. Present moratorium and do the passover, or maybe we find out early enough, maybe we have in our public hearing that we present whatever information we have. It doesn't seem compelling enough and we go, we still have the definitions in our back pocket. So it's sort of a.
Is there any way you can reach out to CM RPC? Cause those three definitions were done by Sutton and CM RPC. Is there any way to reach out to them with those three definitions? And, you know, because Sujata knows Northborough, cause they've been working with Northborough. And say, are there any other definitions you feel that Northborough? Needs in their bylaws to appropriately house? The different types of warehouses.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, that's a great idea. Alright.
Cause she might see those three and say, you've covered all bases. Or she might say you're missing this, this and that.
Okay, so then the next question would be, if we were to come out with definitions. How does that change? Like, then would there be certain, so say, let's get to the last mile example. So say we make a definition for last mile. What is it about that, that, is it just not allowed? Is it, is, so then it comes down to the use table at that point? But why create a definition that's not allowed at all?
I think you need to define what you're talking about, Carrie, when you say the last mile. Are you saying the last mile of your industrial land is not allowed to be any type of warehouses?
What do you? No, no, no. I mean, um, so Amazon, when they categorize their different distribution centers, there's that last mile is the one with like all the little vans. That go out and do all the home deliveries. So there's like the, with the first, I don't know if they call it the first mile. I'll just pretend they do. Um, that's when the, you know, all the big trucks come in. And I think, I don't know what the one we have now, is that a middle mile? I'm not sure. It's a middle mile. And then the last one's just those little small delivery vans we see in our neighborhoods, but it has the most amount of traffic coming in and out of it. So I don't mean the last mile of industrial. It's a type of, um, trucking operation. So the reason it matters is because, is if we're having a traffic issue over there and we put in something that has the highest volume of traffic. Then that might be something that we look at differently than just a warehouse that, that has medical supplies. So it'd just be a way that we could possibly address the solution without. Without the moratorium. Okay. So I will. We'll have to think about that use wise, but I'll go back and at least definition wise, see like what. If CM RPC has other suggestions for what, you know, how this really breaks down or how it's realistically breaking down. In today's environment versus, I don't know when we created our industrial uses, but I'm sure it's outdated regardless. So at a minimum or at least updating our. At a minimum, or at least updating our bylaws to be more current with the actual businesses that are coming to town.
And now maybe Sujata too, because they've been so involved in it with the definitions. Maybe she could answer which type of warehouse she would recommend, or are there any type of warehouses? She would not recommend for Bartlett Street because they've been doing the studies on it.
Right, and remember we had um, one of the applicants presented in a traffic study. The actual, you know, some things are called parcel, whatever, and that, that kind of warehouse had X volume of traffic. So we can then tie it back to all that data, getting back to your point, Michelle, about how we can present this with information and statistics. Um, so if we break it down in that way, we'll be able to tie it to direct. Traffic information by, what is the organization that does the traffic data? Fred or Bob, do you remember? Anyone on the board remember? The Institute of?
Traffic and safety, not that one.
Uh, Institute of Traffic Engineering.
I T E, yeah, okay.
Um, just for clarification, Carrie, um. With your statement that the industrial has not been updated. Most communities do major rezoning and our last major rezoning, which I think was probably seven years ago, maybe I'm not know exactly when. Was when all the boards, committees and commissions worked together undo the major rezoning and that's when the industrial was done. At that time, so it's not as old as you're portraying it to be. It's actually been updated and along the way been tweaked when. The need, you know, when everything, anything was presented that we felt needed to be updated. So it is not something that's. From the nineteen eighties, from the nineteen nine. A consultant for it and all the boards and committees approved it. It went for town meeting, so.
It was two thousand and nine, but um, it was before all this took off.
Well, I'm just kinda joking in a way. We still mentioned floppy disk in this, so I imagine it's a little dated to be talking about floppy disks. But no, that's a great point. So we'll have to, um, I mean, to whatever extent we can. Updated to current day, I think is a, a, a minimum win on this one.
Hmm, I think a lot of surrounding towns are doing it.
Okay, anything else on this one? I have an action item here. Alright, um, I think I have on the same sheet, so we may as well cover it now, though it's not next on my list, but we'll just jump to it. Um, so this is for the use variance. Potential bylaw. Um, I don't know if any further discussion happened at the last meeting. Um, this, I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if questions or comments about it.
No, we didn't talk about it.
Oh, okay.
It was mentioned at the master plan, though, implementation committee.
Oh, really? Under what, under what premise?
We were talking about do- um downtown and um. Dario Damar went into a discussion about downtown. He does a lot of master planning. He talked about sidewalks and about streets and intersections. But he did say that he noticed that their use variance was still there. And in the community development plan, it was mentioned to take it out because as long as there's a use variance. You know, you can override anything that you're gonna be looking for in the master plan. Like, say you wanna. Take out gas stations or take out this, that, or the other thing. As long as there's a use variance. It's a loophole. Those weren't his exact words, but it was interesting that he brought it up.
I mean, obviously this one would be, this has been in the back and forth for years. Um. I think. From my perspective, that is to what you said, Amy, about you can never fully. Achieve what you want to in your zoning for as long as they exist and most towns have started to get, do away with them. So I think we're behind the times on this. I don't know why it's been such a hard sell in Northborough. I don't know if we can overcome that or not, but. I'm willing to give it a try. I don't know how the board members feel about it.
Guess you leave it there and then, you know, people, we can make public, the public hearing and see who comes and if they have any input. Could always take it off because I think like they said, the public hearing is before it goes to print. So if in the public hearing. It's um, you know, there's a lot of reasons why not to do it. Then we can just take it off.
Okay, any other comments on this one?
Is this something that we should talk to the zoning board, DBA about?
Yeah, so I, I sent out a note to the chair to invite them to attend. Uh, one of our meetings for feedback. I just have to reach back out. Um, I don't. I don't think Kathy sent anything in the interim before she left, so I'll just reach back out to the chair. And um, I was thinking for our next meeting, if, well, I'll ask board members now, can. Does everyone have the ability to maybe start at half an hour early next time to accommodate, you know, just getting some feedback from the ZBA? So we'd probably have enough time within our regular meeting if not. Otherwise, I think we'd either start at five thirty. And start with that, or we could start our regular time. What's the availability of the board?
Uh, is that? I don't think you have any applicants at the next meeting, so why would you start earlier?
Yeah, that's true.
We may have plenty of time.
Sure, I'm open to that. Do you want to just start at normal time?
Sure.
Okay, Millie, is that okay with you?
It should be fine with me. I'm trying to think. I, I know I have an appointment in one Monday, but I don't think it's that one.
Okay, well, if we just start at normal time, so.
Okay.
You just start at normal time.
Yep.
Alright, so that'll be great. So we'll get some feedback on that. Um, in the past, so what we looked at before, just in terms of, in the spirit of finding data and information. Um, we have that whole history of what's actually been approved for use variances. I, I went through the decisions and then sent. I think it made its way to the entire board. I'll re-forward it again if not. Um, of just use variances over the last few years and they're just, there haven't been many. So I don't know to what extent it's truly problematic. But I, it'll be good to get some feedback from the ZBA as well. Obviously, this doesn't mean as the board knows, but just for the public's benefit. Um, this doesn't mean dimensional variances, so if people have signs or things like that. Um, dimensional, this doesn't impact dimensional variances. Okay, uh, I'm gonna stop sharing here. Alright, next on my list, I don't know where this one stands. This was, there was a pro- uh, proposed amendment for a groundwater committee. Amy, that was you, I think. Is there something there?
No, they haven't met, so I think I'll just. Wait to see what happens.
Okay.
I think Anthony was gonna talk about it.
Oh, that's right, okay. Okay, am I missing? So we no longer have the overlay, we no longer have. The. Uh, the um, whatever would be the, the exception of square footage on the. Splitting lots. Uh, any, am I missing one? Fred, we're waiting for you.
No, we're good.
Okay, oh, Amy, do you have, you have enfor- is there an enforcement one still or?
Oh, Ryan, I forget about that. I can bring it up or I can just share it again for next time because, well, I can bring it up if you want and go through what I talked about before. But when I did go through the bylaws today for the brewery, Hudson did a similar thing, but they, it was less wording. So I, after I read it today, I was thinking, well, maybe I'll tweak it.
Okay, do you wanna come back around with something tweaked?
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
Okay. Alright, did I miss anything else? Alright, great. So I'm gonna move on then to the, let's see. Oh, shoot, what, and then we have, hold on a second. I just wanna make sure I capture everything we need to do next time. I'm just looking at the agenda and I see thirty seven cells. Okay, um, consideration of the minutes. So I have the minutes from November sixteenth. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yep.
I think, um, Amy, you had some amendments that you sent to the board. Was that for the sixteenth or the seventh?
That was for the sixteenth. Do you want me to share?
Sure.
Okay, let's see. So I have so many things, cause I have all the minutes up and. Or so I don't have that one up. I have the seventh. I'm gonna open it. Take me just a second.
Okay, do you have amendments for the seventh as well?
I did have some, yeah.
Okay. Any other amendments while Amy's pulling that up?
I had a few minor things.
Okay.
On page two, and I'm not as technologically savvy, so I don't really know how to share my screen, but.
Do you want me to, I'll take, I'll, do you want me to open up? Or Amy, are you close to finding yours?
Yeah, eleven sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do you see them?
No.
No.
Oh, you don't? Here, hold on. I just opened them, so now maybe I can share. A second, sorry, not as quick. Alright, can you see him now?
Yep.
Okay. I'll start and then pipe in Millie when we get to yours if you want.
Sure.
Uh, I just started with Damon Amato's paragraph right there. And several concepts were discussed by the applicant. And then on the next line down. And he discussed what could be done by right, according to the applicant, nothing was possible. Like, I just wanted the paragraph to make it seem like it wasn't, you know, it was him talking. It wasn't us as a board.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the. Three more sentences down. They are proposing is a new zoning amendment to add RC to the OSRD district. I asked Kathy before she left. I don't think I got an answer. The OSRD district is in one part of our bylaw. It's not under the overlays. So I asked her if it was an overlay, but I didn't, I don't think I got an answer. But either way, I crossed out to the overlay, cause it's in a, it's in part of the book that says it's the OSRD district. And then for the last sentence of that paragraph. It said on the site, but reduce it to five or more for yard area and to meet septic regulations. So, does anybody else have anything in that paragraph?
I might want.
Sure.
Fred, you wanna?
If you go back up, Amy, right where it says according to the applicant.
Yep.
Just above that, it says property comma cleanup.
Yep.
Think you wanna eliminate that comma? Because he was talking about the cost to clean up the property, not the cost to buy the property.
Uh.
I believe that's what he was talking about.
Cost of the property cleanup. Oh, yeah, good catch, Fred.
So I'll just do this, cause I afford this to Melanie. I'll just, I try to highlight. And cross it out. Hopefully she gets that. I can actually put a comment, take out the comma.
I'm sure she's already on it.
Yep, okay. So in this paragraph on the second page, Fred, it said, Mr. Litchfield said the minimum. I think it was lot size requirement in RA is eighty thousand. I don't think it was water.
That's correct.
Yep. And then now I'm down to George Pember.
A- actually, Amy, if you go back, it's um, I, is it lot size or lot? We're, we weren't talking about groundwater at that point, right?
Yeah, but this talks about RA eighty thousand, RB forty thousand, RC twenty thousand.
Okay, cause the. The groundwater one is eighty thousand and groundwater two is forty thousand, so they. I, I wanted to make sure we're talking about just the RA and RB, not the groundwater aspects.
Yeah. But I think even RC in groundwater is forty thousand, isn't it? Of, isn't it?
The groundwater's overlay on all of the zones, it's, it's, it's only about. If it's in a groundwater one, the res- single family house lot minimum requirement is eighty thousand. And in groundwater two, it's forty thousand. So as long as we're not talking about groundwater in that paragraph. You're right, you're correct.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it. In the first sentence. Do you agree?
I do.
Okay, so I'm gonna go down to George Pember. And the old assessor's map shows that the zoning district line divided the property. Made more sense to me. Than the old assessor's map shows that the dividing line on the side.
Mm-hmm.
And then two more sentences down. I think I just fixed these. It just made more sense.
Maybe that doesn't really technically make sense because. It says the old assessor's map shows that the zoning district line divided the property. You added in. The zoning district line divided the property.
Yeah.
Pember said it was the dividing line was on the side of the property. And then down below, you added in leaving this parcel in residential zone versus commercial. So if the, the zoning district line divided the property, meaning down the middle. I mean, I guess I would, it made sense to me the way I was reading it, the way he presented it.
Well, the old assessor's map was the one that had the line through the middle. The new one is where they moved it to the side. So the old assessor's map, which was the original, what George was saying, the line divided the property.
Mm-hmm.
Part of the property is in the downtown, in part is in residential. And then when it was rezoned. They moved the line, leaving this parcel in residential versus commercial. So for the top one. The dividing line wasn't on the side. It actually did go through the property in the original old assessor's map.
So I think on the second, you could, you could make that change if you think that grammatically reads better. But on the second one, he explains that instead of, it should be, instead of bisecting, dissecting the property. It is on the boundary line between their property and the next one, I think explains it a little better. Than when you say leaving this in one residential and versus commercial. I think there's an explanation there and then there's also an explanation, when a new tenant was coming, they found they were not allowed. I think that's an exclamation that, an explanation that you're, you're removing. From the minutes.
When the town rezoned the boundary line between the two districts. Was moved closer to the center town, leaving this parcel in residential zone versus commercial. And she said. Leaving this parcel. Instead of bisecting the property, it is on the boundary line between the property and the next one closer to the center of town. To me, it, it didn't make sense to me. Instead of bisecting the property. It is on the boundary line between their property. And the next one closer to the center of town. I mean, I could leave it, but I didn't even understand what it was me, what it meant. Like what George was saying was that it was now moved into residential versus commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is the crux of what we wanted to change.
Right, and that's what, if someone went back and read the minutes of what George was trying to do. I would understand it, but. I didn't understand what the boundary line between their property and the next one closer to the center of town. I guess I didn't see it. But I was trying to just make it make sense. And because it is own residential, new tenants had to go before the ZBA for a variance. Versus because it is zone residential, new tenants and. Oh, I just said. And then the next paragraph down, I was just, it was a question, so it's no big deal. I was just putting a question mark.
Okay, so are we, go ahead, Millie.
Sorry, I just have a couple of quick ones on this page, so.
Sure.
Do we wanna do that? The third paragraph. Above, if you can scroll up, it's, one of them's really kind of very small. Um, but it's um, the one that starts with Ms. Markneck and then. it's, one of them's really kind of very small, but it's the one that starts with Ms. Markneck, and then halfway down, two-thirds of the way down on the left, it starts with plan, the sentence that starts with plan, it's just a very, keep going all down, 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 and to the left. Uh, yeah, and then, keep going, left. And then up, yeah, plan, and then it says Mr. Markneck.
Oh, yes.
Not a big deal, but you know. But the other one that I wanted to clarify was on the next paragraph, just below that, that thicker section of yellow that you highlighted, we were just talking about that section.
Mm-hmm.
The next sentence, basically, it does sort of describe Mr. Pember is asking for, is asking if the zoning line can be moved to the outside edge of the property, it's really supposed to be the south side edge.
Okay. And that was it.
Okay, and then what are we doing with, instead of bisecting the property, is that, do we care if that stays or goes, or?
Don't worry about it.
Alright.
Was that Melanie? I didn't know whose voice that was.
Melanie texted me and said she's happy to make the changes, but would like one copy, rather than one from each of you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, perfect.
So then, down with signs, it said, Mr. Ziden was not prepared, but does not intend to withdraw with the D. And this is allowed, but in terms of someone bringing home a company vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, and this was mine, this is when I talked about enforcement, so this was something that I stated. It was just the description at the top of the page that I read, when I talked about the enforcement bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
And I read it, so I just, I just wanted to add it there, because it, it helped the whole paragraph make sense, at least to me. And on this page.
Uh, Amy, could you back up for a second, please?
Sure.
Go back up to that paragraph.
Yep.
Uh, when you're talking about zoning and enforcement, um, I recommend you don't use the title building inspector.
Okay.
I recommend the use of zoning enforcement officer. Because the building inspector enforces one set of codes, the zoning enforcement officer enforces the zoning code, and this isn't building.
Okay.
Okay. So just, you know, it's, I just wanted to make that distinction, that's.
Okay. I'm just gonna add it now.
Yeah.
You're gonna wear two hats. And sometimes I confuse which one you are.
I still only get one paycheck, though.
Oh, right.
Um, y- you can also just write ZEO.
Oh, okay.
You know, save a lot of typing.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it that way now, because I'll end up screwing something up.
Go down two more lines.
Oh, I have it again.
Yep, right. Go to the right. Keep going, all the way to the right.
Oh, okay, I'm gonna put ZEO for this one.
That's fine.
Oh, my, what am I doing? I'm still on the wrong line.
You didn't click on, yeah.
Amy, if you put ZEO in parentheses right there where your cursor is now, then Melanie will know what you're referring to later on when you write ZEO.
Okay. Brilliant.
There we go.
Mm-hmm, and I just. Oops.
There you go.
I gotta learn.
Okay, thank you. So, there's that, and, um, I don't know if I did it anywhere else. I guess when we talked about it, you said that giving immediate notice requires time, change it to a reasonable amount of time, and you mentioned seven days. And Ms. Pritzke said this would spell it out in the bylaw, so everyone would understand what is allowed, just sentences that I added.
Okay, anything else?
I have a question, if you go above that, um, where you did the big paragraph, Amy.
Mm-hmm.
In yellow, it's, it keep going up, it's a Fred Litchfield, it, right there, Mr. Federico and Fred Litchfield are working on federally flood language. Is it federal flood language, or federally approved flood language, or, I'm not sure what that was.
Probably it should be federally recommended.
Okay.
Uh, it, it comes from the state and the federal FEMA maps, the flood insurance rate maps. But we're, we're, we're trying to accommodate their request for us to amend our bylaw to reflect all the parts of floodplain overlay district language that they would like to see across the border.
Okay, alright, that was all, all I was questioning.
Okay, and I think that could be it. Yep, that was it, did anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Alright, I'm just gonna save this and I'll send it to Melanie.
Perfect. Okay, is there a motion to accept the November sixteenth minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the November sixteenth minutes as amended.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie is an aye. Okay, December seventh, did everyone have a chance to read, oh, Amy, you said you have.
I did have some. Do you mind if I share, does anybody else want to share, do they, anybody else have anything?
No, I'm abstaining from this one, because I wasn't at the full meeting.
Can you see it?
I think I had anything.
Yep.
If people want to wait if they haven't read it.
Oh, did everyone, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, did everyone have a chance to read it, or do we need to hold?
I'm reviewing it now, I'm opening it up now.
Okay. Do you want to do it at the next one, Michelle, or do you feel comfortable looking at it now?
I'm just opening it up now, you, give me one sec.
Okay.
I'll wait for Michelle, I just had a couple little ones on this one.
Yeah, I didn't really have, I don't think I had anything. Yeah.
I actually did have something on this one, real quick.
Okay.
Uh, it's the December seventh, um, when we're going under the warrant article headers, they go to breweries, commercial, warehouse, and trucking. The last sentence in that actually seems like it should be, oh, maybe it is under use variances, yeah, um. It doesn't seem to, I didn't think it belonged there, but maybe it does. Bylaw warehouses, because this really only talks about, oh, yeah, okay, I say, never mind. I'm clear.
I think because it came out in the same email, it's all in the same paragraph, like that, those bylaws.
Yeah, it's just most of it talks about the moratorium, and then at the last sentence, it says use variances will be reviewed on January fourth, and I thought that was actually for something else, for use variance. So good.
Okay.
Yeah, Amy can move forward with her changes, and I'll let you know if I have any moving forward.
Okay, so George, on thirty-seven South Street, um, I just added, then it would be spot zoning.
Oh, yeah, um, sent a present for spot zoning, or is it? Um, it's, it doesn't mix with exam, and it's just one parcel that is being singled out.
Maybe I don't need that. Maybe, I don't know, if that makes sense, or doesn't, actually, maybe it made sense before. Because she was saying that it wasn't.
Oh, I think the, if you correct, if you say that it, instead of saying it, because you don't know if you're talking about the parcel or spot zoning, and I think Kathy was saying spot zoning doesn't, the definition of spot zoning is it doesn't mix in with existing land uses, and it's just one parcel that is being singled out by surrounded, surrounded by completely different zone. Then it would be start, so, so, you're doing the same thing that I did, I just did it with the it.
Where do I change the it, so change?
If, if you put in spot, Kathy's interpretation or, or discussion was spot zoning doesn't mix in with the existing, that's what spot zoning is, so if you take out it and you put in spot zoning.
Where?
Um, the beginning of that sentence, basically.
Oh, so spot zoning, and then, so I did it, but I just did it at the.
You did it at the other end, yeah. That is a mix, it's being single.
Because it didn't make.
This is a property that has been zoned downtown business, so that's the distinction, yeah.
So do it that way.
That's where she was, yeah, and then you say that this is a property, yeah.
And this was there twice, so that's just a change there.
Okay. Alright, that makes sense, yeah.
Except, I don't think Kathy was at that meeting.
Yeah, this is the second meeting, we had George on the last meeting in November, yeah.
Okay.
And then she did the last one.
I just checked in, sorry, got my dates mixed up.
Oh, that's okay.
The other thing is that I felt that it was confusing to go down, let's see, if you go all the way to the, oh, no, not down, I meant to the left, we're still on that one. Um, let's see, a downtown, downtown city would be, oh, gosh, this, it doesn't line up with mine. There are many facets involved, oh, gosh, I really should figure out how to do this. That the discussion, or is it, um, okay, so keep going, like, two sentences down from where we were just working.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, there are many facets involved with what we'll be doing as a community for downtown, blah, blah, blah. It's the next part of that sentence, there will be several elements to that plan, and part of that discussion will be, do what? Do people want what, that may not have, will be to do, will to be, will be to find out what people want. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
To to find out what people want, or if, you know, for example, to expand downtown, to contract downtown, or what are the physical limits of downtown?
Yeah.
Whether, question, expand, yeah, okay, that was it for me, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I gotta figure out how to do that, though.
And then Ms. Pritzke said, well, like, just seeing running from both the Butters, the Hunts, and the Lelands, and they have no issues, and I did ask them about the commercial one, but that's not in there. But I didn't add it.
Okay.
Maybe it was down here further. Oh, for this one, I added she, I don't know why I did it this way. She thought. And then under use variances, I mean, the moratorium, Ms. Pritzke said she drafted these bylaws as examples, as we've been talking about them for many meetings. And then substance definitions were used for trucking and warehouses, because they had worked with CMR PC on theirs. Did you have anything, Michelle?
No, yet.
I'm at planning board rules and regulations, near the end of the paragraph, Ms. Pritzke said, if it's laid out in black and white, it's easy to follow. So it's just little words.
Mm-hmm.
That's there, there versus there. And that's it.
Anything else from anyone, Millie or Michelle?
Not I.
Also. Okay, is there a motion to accept the amended, I'm sorry, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to accept the December seventh minutes as amended?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Michelle?
One sec. Aye.
Okay, Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Carrie abstains? Okay, um, next we have the anything on master plan implementation committee, that the next meeting is January twentieth, so nothing, anything there?
No, I think he's gonna bring us the scope.
Okay, great, we also have the continued discuss, Fred, any A and Rs, law releases or bonds?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Uh, then the continued discussion regarding Newton Street roadway improvement, so Fred had sent a memo to the board. Uh, do you want to speak to it at all, Fred, or do board members have any questions? Would you like the opportunity to speak to it first?
Uh, sure, um, well, rather than reading you the memo, it's, it was pretty much a chronology of what transpired, I wanted to share with each of the planning board members the actual decisions, because the oldest one goes back to two thousand and seven, there's quite a bit of history there, and I'm not sure that everyone on the board had it. The projects, all this, the work on Newton Street has spanned, you know, more than a decade, so, almost two. And so I wanted to, to make sure you all got the idea as to how long we've been working at this, and what transpired, it started with an A and R with four lots that Mr. Ramadan owned, and needed a scenic road application, that was the decision in two thousand and seven. There was a condition in there that he prepared a plan, which he neglected to do, and the building department was instrumental in withholding an occupancy permit on house, I believe it's house number three twenty-five Newton Street, uh, for quite some time, until he, uh, submitted the plan, and then the board got involved, and the plan was accepted, and the, uh, board got involved, and then the next phase by amending that special, that scenic road application to include phases of the work and when it was to be done, and while Mr. Ramadan was working on the improvements, um, the neighbor across the street had denied an easement on his property, allowing him to lower the road even further than it was, which was his right. And then, um, the project, the plan was approved as it was, um, shown in that application. And then, a few years later, the neighbor across the street had an arrangement with a developer who came in and wanted to do uh, development of his own, breaking it up into four lots, and he also got a scenic road application, at that time, there was some discussion about the developers uh, working together to share the cost, because, uh, they were getting benefit of all the improvements in Newton Street that Mr. Ramadan was required to do, and the board asked them to work together, and they uh, came in at that meeting and said that they had an agreement, and then. Uh, came in at that meeting and said that they had an agreement and that they would share the cost and so they got a. Scenic road permit. That included lowering the street, that extra foot and a half that was. Required initially requested of Mr. Ramadan, but because the easement was. Denied by the Gustafsons, then he couldn't do it. So. We asked him to lower the road that much more uh, while he was working with Mr. Ramadan. Shortly after that, I have. I've been told that the uh, agreement fell apart. Mr. Ramadan went ahead and proceeded to make the improvements in Newton Street based upon the plan that he had. The developer for the Gustafson property really didn't do too much until the very end this past summer. The God rail was installed, I believe at his cost. And then the Asbille plan. That had been prepared by Mr. Ramadan's engineer, the interim has built was then had the uh, guide rail added to it. And submitted. That's when I reviewed the decisions and realized that the road hadn't been lowered. Um, by this as according to the second scenic road application and decision. They're asked they being the Gustafson property developer, uh. Mr. Wamboldt is looking for release of his lots so he can proceed. Um, Mr. Ramadan would like his money back. He has about fifteen thousand dollars being held by the town. My recommendation is that in the terms of Mr. Ramadan's. Bond money that you're not giving any money until he gives us the actual easements that were required in the plan. He has been made aware of that. Supposedly he's working on it now. In terms of the additional lowering of the road in Newton Street in front of the Gustafson property. That's a bit more tricky. The road. The only way for you to release the lots and the restrictions that were put on those lots by that scenic road application would be. To amend that decision, which is what you did when Mr. Ramadan wanted to amend his original decision from 2007. Re- you know, requiring all the improvements. So I, my suggestion would be that they. Apply for an amended permit and plead their case as to why they think that. Roadway improvement, the lowering of the road shouldn't be done. And then you would have to hold a public hearing and make a decision. Gonna hold off on any more recommendation beyond that because. Doesn't really matter until you get it before you, if in fact that's what they want to do. Out of fairness, it seems like. Mr. Wamboldt and that development should be made to do everything that was required in their permit. Um, as Mr. Ramadan was required to do. Even though it spanned a quite a bit of Newton Street. He owned a lot more land, a lot more frontage. Um, but he was held to what he was originally obligated to do. Seems doesn't seem quite fair for them to not do anything and then ask for relief and get it. However. That's really up to the board. The current situation in Newton Street is much better than it was. The road's been widened, it's been repaved. Um, there is a guide rail. There's still some work that is also required in that. Second. Property scenic road decision, the Gustafson property, I believe it's referred to as two eighty Newton Street. Uh, there were some other things they had to. Uh, widen the shoulder, change the slope, relocate a driveway. All that can be done during the development of those lots, but they're reluctant to proceed with any development because those lots are not. Uh, potentially ready to be released. So I think they're looking for some assurance that they do X, Y, and Z. They'll get those lots released. But the big hang up is that one condition about lowering the road, which hasn't been done. The hope was that they would be working together. Um, to accommodate that because the plan. We didn't admit, we didn't have them amend the roadway improvement plan. We went with the plan. The only extra change was. That they would lower the road that additional eighteen inches that the dust of sins originally denied uh, the easement for so. That summarizes it, but I'm sure there's questions.
Does board have any questions?
How many feet of the road is, do you know? How much of the road needs to be lowered or?
Um, the location uh, it it. The the critical spot where the road was required to be lowered and uh, there was a specific number in the decision. That it was be lowered uh, to a specific number, which is roughly eighteen inches lower than where it is today and where it was. Before all the other improvements that Mr. Ramadan did make. The location at this station eight plus oh, five. As referenced in the decision. Is where Mr. Ramadan's driveway comes out for his common driveway for eight additional lots. That he can't build on till he finishes all this work. And it's directly across the street from the existing house at two eighty Newton Street. So it's. Integral to the use of both properties and both developers. The way it stands now. Mr. Ramadan hasn't done anything on that common driveway except clear a little bit of land. Where the work and his equipment was stored during the reconstruction of Newton Street and the. Driveway across the street has been installed, even though it wasn't permitted. And so some barricades have been put up, so it can't be used. Um, there's some work that would affect both sides of the road and both properties.
And it's paved already, right?
Newton Street has um, yes, been the widening, the base pavement, the shoulders. Um, culvert was replaced. The road's been top coated and um, we worked with town council to. Have them do the working and the ba- the board did release money to allow Mr. Ramadan to pay his. Contractor to do that work so that it didn't languish. The town was considering. Uh, I don't know if any of you recall, I forget who was on the board at which time, but. There was a strong concern by the DPW director and myself that if the work wasn't done. Uh, I think it was 2019. If it wasn't done during that construction season and it was left to go another winter. That the base pavement that was put down might have to be ripped up and replaced because. Base pavement's not intended to be the final wearing course. It's a little bit more pervious, allows water to go through it and then. Gets into the gra- the subbase and then that's where you get your potholes and. Pavement deteriorates. We're afraid if it went another year without the top coat, they wouldn't. He was willing to do it, but needed some cooperation. So the board did work with him. Allow him to do the work and then pay him quite quickly, gave him his the bond money, that portion back so he could pay his contractor and be on his way. So. Um, the road, like I said, the road's in good shape. It's better than it was. Then the issue of the extra lowering of the road is. It's more of a fairness issue than it is a. Roadway issue, I I could say. We wanted it to be lowered, uh, thought it would be better. Um, everyone agreed at the time, it just didn't get done.
Amy, you have something?
Yeah, um, how? Why? Not why, but how many feet of roadway is it? Is it that hill like a little? Is it the hell? That was the concern all along?
Uh, there were two spots on Newton Street. I don't know if if any of you have driven up there lately, but there were two spots. During uh, the whole process that were. Kind of choke points, if you will. One was up by number three twenty five. Um. I don't know if you remember there, a lot of the residents up there have moved. And so the owners of the various properties are not, don't have the same names as I'm gonna refer to them as. But there was the Timlax who bought one of the houses from Mr. Ramadan. Um, right in front of their between their property and number three twenty five, there was a knob there with some ledge that we wanted taken down. But because that. Would have lowered the road and required them to grade the other side of Newton Street where the girl lanes lived. Um, and the girl lanes did not want to grant the easement at that time. Um, it wasn't able to be incorporated into the design. So he. Did what he could within the limits of the right of way in terms of lowering the road and it was the design was left. We were never forcing anyone to give an easement. It was all voluntary. He was forced to ask. If they denied in writing, we took it at their word and then allowed him to redesign the road accordingly. There was another one. Lower on Newton Street closer to uh. Sherilyn, not Sherilyn, yeah, Sherilyn. But that the last, the next intersection going back towards Maynard Street. And there was another place that's where station eight plus oh, five is that we also wanted it lowered. That easement was also denied by the Gustafsons as I explained, but. Ultimately karma came back around and uh.
Right.
They needed something from us, so we asked them to work together.
That's a hard thing being I've been involved. Michelle was there longer than me, but. My first year was when this whole, whole summer we spent on this. But and the neighbors really wanted. A lot of this road work done before safety issues. But then when it came down to giving easements, they wouldn't. And the ghost, these ghost office, I can't even say their name, but they were the ones who wouldn't give up the easement. So now they're in the predicament. So.
Well, the the Gustafsons have sold and Mr. Wamboldt and his company own that property now. But um, he took on. Getting the scenic road application along with the Form A for those lots. Um, with the stipulation that they work together and lower the road that extra eighteen inches.
What is the reason for lowering the road?
Improve the site distance.
Okay. So it's. There are a couple of hills that they could have seen over.
Yeah, the the more critical one was further up the road towards the Berlin town line. Near the number three twenty five and the Timlock property and the girl lane property.
That's tricky.
That one, that one never came before us with an application that we could tie it to. So.
Why can't he just grant? Now that he owns the property, why can't he just grant the easement to do the lowering of the road?
Uh, because the decision said he would be responsible for lowering the road. And they they agreed to work together. To make the improvements, but when Mr. Ramadan went forward, they weren't working together and they didn't, he didn't lower the road. And the Gusus, uh, the Wamboldt. Company didn't work with Mr. Ramadan to make sure that happened.
So if they had originally granted it. They wouldn't be in this predicament.
That's correct. If they had originally granted it. It would have been re- it would have been done when Mr. Ramadan did all the other improvements, but because it wasn't. And we didn't have them go back and. Redesign the roadway improvement plan. We just required this one extra thing. It got missed. Like I said, the roadway is better than it was by quite a bit. Uh, the widening, the pavement, the new pavement. Uh, new culvert down the end of the road, the new guide rail. It's in in many ways, it's a much better and safer road. Um, I don't believe we've had any issues with speeding, which is something that residents are always concerned about when a road gets widened and repaved. And I know the DPW is out there plowing it. They feel much more comfortable traveling up and down than they were.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So what is the decision? At hand, are we? So there's obviously another. New special apartment here. What are we voting on? Do you need a vote on the bond?
I'm not asking you to vote on anything, but I, what I wanted was to provide you with the summary. Uh, so you had the whole picture. Um. I made a recommendation on the two developers looking for releases. The Ramadas. Wants his money, but he is now aware that he needs to give us those easements and I need to run them through town council to make sure they're in the appropriate form. Um, Mr. Wamboldt and his engineer are looking for those lots to be released on the other side so that he can build them. And unless he lowers the road. I wouldn't recommend that you release those lots. However, if you want to consider amending the decision, if he wants to ask. For that decision to be amended, you could then hold a public hearing, weigh the merits, pro and con, see what the rest of the residents have to say. And then either amend or not amend the scenic road decision that was given to number two eighty Newton Street.
Okay, so to recap, your recommendations are to not release any bond money until all required easements are submitted. And approved by town council and. To require the. Condition number two, lowering Newton Street. You either you recommend it be completed or they come back for an amendment, but what is the pre- what is your? What do you think is best for that road? Is it to be completed or does it matter?
Well, I wouldn't say it doesn't matter because we wouldn't have recommended in the first place. Um, I've spoken to the DPW director and we. Can live with the road the way it is because it is better than it was. But the fairness issue about treating one developer the same as another developer is important. Um, and so. That. Mr. Wamboldt a- and his engineer should have either do the work that they were required to do. Or apply for an amendment and make their case to you that the road is. Is good enough and that you're willing to release them from that obligation.
Okay.
But I I don't, I don't have the ability, nor do I want to release them from that or recommend that you do that right off the bat. I want. Them to apply you to consider it and then. Way the alternatives.
Okay, so what you're looking, what what we need at this point is. Are we willing to entertain a revised application?
Yeah, i- if the applicant wants to. He could do the work. He'd have to wait till next spring because we won't let him work in the road till at least April first. He could either do the work. And then get the lots released or he could apply for an amended decision and and plead his case. He has to make that decision and then you. Could make your decision based upon his request.
Okay. Do you want any board input at this juncture or this is just a summary giving us information to?
Um, the summary was to bring everyone up to speed because I saw some blank stares last month. Um. I've made my. Recommendation how for you to proceed at this point and I'm willing to stand by that. I see that Mr. Bemis is in the audience and um. He might like for you to. Take a straw poll and see what your thoughts are on. Uh, revised, an amended decision, uh, but I don't know. So I, at this point. I don't think there's any formal vote for you to take at this point.
Okay, uh, any initial thoughts from the board or questions, concerns, feedback?
No, I think this is really helpful, Fred. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything from Michelle or Amy from your perspective? Both been here the longest to see this happen for a while.
As I said before, I think that the applicant, the developer agreed to this and should follow through with it. I also don't think that you should hear public comments tonight unless you're willing to invite the public into comment as well. It's not fair.
Uh, what do you mean by that?
By asking, you have uh, the applicants, I'm assuming uh. Engineer who is sitting in the audience. So if you're going to bring him in to discuss it, I think you'd also want to bring in the public to discuss it.
Uh, so the other side of it, I'm just, so do you just mean if I open up public comments, that does open it to the whole public? Do you just mean with notice or?
Exactly.
Okay.
Was it on? It was on the agenda though, right?
Yep, it is on the agenda. All right, E- Amy, do you have any comments on this one?
Um, well, I think we have to let him decide if he wants to come forward with an amendment. I don't. I know what I'm feeling, but I don't know if we're supposed to give public comments on it without having the public hearing. If they're gonna change. If they're gonna apply for.
Okay, all right. So you just don't feel comfortable commenting. Okay. All right, I think um. It sounds like overall. The board doesn't have further questions for you, Fred. So it sounds like it would be up to the applicant at this point whether they pursue or don't pursue. And that's just a decision they'll make and either come forward or not.
Mm hmm.
Okay, um, copies of that. Memo that I prepared for you with the attachments went to um. Both of the developers, engineers and Mr. Ramadan. I didn't have an email from Mr. Wamboldt, so I I did send it to his engineer. With a request that he shared with his client, but um, they do have what you have.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, so to Michelle's point, I think we not take public comments on this one. And then if you do have comments and you want to submit it to the planning board and send a letter after the meeting, that's certainly welcome. Um, for anybody who's listening now or listening later, um, please send in your feedback if you'd like to the planning board and we'll, I'll be able to see those comments. At that time, um, otherwise it sounds like no further action on this one.
I don't see any.
Okay. All right, great. So. Thank you, Fred, for that. That was a, that was a great summary. I know it's a long and winding road to follow.
No pun intended.
Literally.
Okay, um, any subcommittee updates? Okay, um, any subcommittee updates?
Nothing yet.
Okay, um, our next planning board meeting is the eighteenth. As we discussed, um, we have an invitation out to the ZBA. I'll follow up on that. And then after that, we have the first. I don't, is there anything coming up at the ZBA meeting, Fred? Are you also the staff liaison for the ZBA meeting? As well?
You have like four.
I will be there.
Okay.
As we all do around here, we wear many hats. I will, I will be there. I don't know that there's, I think there's only one item on their agenda right now. It has to do with, um, some property on Lauren Street, but it's, um, it should be a fairly short meeting, so. Um, if, um, you are going to invite the ZBA to the next planning board meeting and they accept, then we'll need to post two agendas so that they, you can have the joint meeting at least for a portion of your night. And they can meet appropriately, just let me know. I, I would also, I, I meant to bring it up earlier, but I was going to ask if, um, the board members have, uh, literature that they're sharing with each other regarding the zoning bylaws. I seem to be not included in that chain. If you could just add me.
Oh, right.
Cause I didn't have the craft brewery. I didn't have some of the other stuff. I did get the sign language earlier today. It just makes it a little bit easier. I'm sorry, but I'm a little old school. I like that piece of paper when I'm sitting here.
I'm with you.
So if you could add me, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, got it. Amy?
I was just wondering if you, Carrie, heard anything about, um, did anyone apply for the town planner job? Like, have you been, heard anything?
Oh, no, I haven't. Has it, do we know if anybody's applied? I keep meaning to reach out.
I do not know.
All right, so I'll, I'll send a note over and find out what. I, I do believe people have applied. I don't know how far down the process or who they are, any sort of details, so. Um, Kathy said before she left that, um, either John or the town administrator or the assistant town administrator would be reaching out to loop in the planning board when it was the right time. So, um, I haven't heard from him or Becca, so I'll reach out and see where they are in the process. Okay, I, I think Fred really enjoys this though and probably wants to stick around for as long as he's.
I know.
All right, is there a motion or adjourned? Okay, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor, Michelle?
I.
Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
Carrie's an I. Thanks very much. Have a great night.
Bye, good night.
Happy New Year.